These funds and how they have to be deployed, so it's a good opportunity, I think, to kind of describe each category. So we can just go one by one. You have the information in front of you there. But first off, one of the categories that I've felt strongly about is developing some capacity, some economic development capacity for residential development. Everything we have right now in economic development funds are geared towards commercial and industrial. We don't really have anything that is geared towards larger scale residential projects, affordable housing projects. And in the last few years, I've gotten more and more calls for assistance with gap financing for projects like the Richford Arms, Methodist Towers, High Point Tower. And none of what we have can actually be deployed into projects like that right now. And so you're seeing more and more difficulty in getting the capital stack where it needs to be to get these projects completed. And so I do think there's a need there to support those investments in our existing affordable housing. It can be a big challenge to get these investments made because the rents are set. There's not a lot of flexibility there. And a lot of times, those rent levels don't support the debt service that these investors need to make these projects happen. So I think there's a place for funding that can be in a subordinate position to a primary lender to help move these larger scale projects along. And I think it would help expand availability for affordable housing.
You're talking about down payments, Chris?
No, this would be for actually developing, helping to develop the building or helping it get to closing. You know, we've had calls on folks looking at some of the old schools and trying to convert those to affordable housing. They can't do it on their own and conventional financing can't close the gap by itself either. So I think this is a need that continues to grow. And we also think it fits the definition of, you know, trying to get these funds deployed into the challenging areas of the city. So, yeah, that's an area that I'd like us to take a look at.
Which with that being said, Chris, those areas or those just throw out there, school or whatever, those could actually be put on the tax rolls at some point here?
Yes, so the developers, typically the developers I talk to are for-profit developers. So these would, in most cases, be taxable projects in the end, so.
Irving School, one of the ones we're talking about?
I'm sorry?
Irving School, one of the...
That's a good example of how do we get the, how do we close the gap so that they can get the primary lender comfortable enough to move ahead with the project? And this has become more and more recurring theme in the last few years and for various reasons. Tax credit market isn't quite what it used to be. The rents that HUD allows haven't kept up with inflation and construction costs. So now the gap to make these projects work continues to grow. And I'm getting these calls more frequently now. So, but, you know, we look at this as, this wouldn't be a grant. These would be patient loans, very low interest loans. But I think it's in our best interest to see these projects get developed and then revolve those funds and use them over again.
Are these local calls you're getting or is it more of a...
It's both. It's both. Yeah, there's...
One more than the other or...
I don't want to, I don't want to put any names out there, but there's, there's both local and out of town developers that are looking at various properties. And it's, right now, we're having difficulty getting anyone to move on a couple of properties here because the gap is significant.
Can they mix this funding in with LERTA? The candidates, no, I mean...
Well, LERTA, yeah, LERTA is going to apply if you're taxable and you're going to pay property taxes. If they increase the assessed value of that property, then that, you know, the tax, the basis will be locked in and then whatever assessed value they create would be on the abatement.
So that'll override LERTA?
No. No, no, no. No, what we're doing is freezing the current basis on, so let's say you take one of these larger properties and it's assessed to 2 million and they go in and they do significant renovations, reassess it at two and a half. It'll remain taxed at the 2 million for the 10-year period. This is enabling developers to go in and make much needed improvements. A lot of these buildings are well past their useful lifespan. And, you know, the folks living in these units need, you know, appropriate housing. So it seems to be a challenge that's out there and it seems to also fit, you know, the spirit of this funding too, so.
Chris, are you looking at new funding for new projects or are we looking at existing buildings that we're looking to upgrade?
I think it would be both.
Both?
Yeah.
Because there's a need for both, I'm sure.
I've gotten a lot of calls over the years from folks that, you know, maybe they want to build a six-unit residential apartment in the city or a four-unit, you know. This would primarily be five units and above. Because one to four units, that's underwritten like a conventional mortgage. Five units and above, you're in a different category. It's underwritten differently. And so I've gotten calls over the years from numerous folks saying, you know, if I were to move into the city or build six units or eight units, what assistance is there for me? And the answer's always been there hasn't been with financing. And, you know, I feel that we need to encourage that addition to our tax base just like industrial and commercial too. So the challenge is if you wanted to move into the city and build a larger residential development, there are appraisal challenges and the banks are now limited in what they can finance. So if this is a way to start encouraging more residential development and expand affordable housing options, I think it's something we need to take a look at.
How would you assess the, would you give, would you loan out 10%, 20%? How much, what is the magic number? Because in all honesty, I guess, in one breath, yes, we definitely want them to come here and develop. But in one breath, they're almost double dipping, getting AARP funding or loans per se as well as getting the tax abatement or LERTA. Is there a way, I guess, am I...
So I guess, yeah, I mean, I don't know if I look at it as double dipping, especially with the loan. If it was a grant, it'd be different. You're probably looking, for most of these projects, you're probably looking at a gap of anywhere from 10% to 30% of the project cost. So we would be a subordinated position, a junior lien holder would be less than the primary lender. We wouldn't be looking to do the bulk of the financing. We would do as much as needed to get the project done. And so if that's 10% in some cases, it might be 15%. Whatever would be enough to get the primary lender comfortable to underwrite that loan. And that's the gap that we face. And so short of bringing a lot of cash to a deal, which, you know, it's difficult to put 30% or 40% cash into a deal, even with tax credits in the market we're in now, these projects aren't moving forward. So it's not, these usually cash flow. It's not, it's not the payment on the second loan that's the challenge. It's the immediate capital or lack of.
So, well, not to go back into the double dipping or the, but I know a lot...
I didn't mean to use that.
I know, but I know that...
Taking advantage of more than one option.
Right, that, you know, so I guess the question would be, what is the difference in the tax credit market? And I'm aware of, you know, a company just recently getting seven, I believe it was $7 million in tax credits to build something locally. And isn't this the role that the PFAA should be stepping into?
PHFA plays a huge role in that. And so you've got the competitive tax credit, which is 9%, and you have the across-the-board 4%. The 4% credit's not enough to get most of these projects done. So now they're all competing for the 9% credit. And the allocation for that's not enough to support the demand. And so that's where you see, that's where a situation might arise where the non-competitive 4% tax credit might work if I'm able to come in and finance 10% of this. And so now you're expanding the capacity of PHFA by enabling a developer to maybe take that route. Whereas if you have everybody applying for the 9%, then the allocations are gone and the project dies. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's an area we haven't been in before, but I think there is missed opportunities here. And I think, you know, we focus on commercial and industrial and we should, but tax base is tax base and investment is investment. And I'd like it to come in any way I can get it to come in. So if this helps in some small way, and we can revolve it and bring it back in and circulate it again, then I just think it's something we need to think about.
Do we do a thorough search as far as the people coming in? If they're local, if they owe us anything?
Yes, so we would be underwriting, you know, there would have to be...
I've had my hand raised trying to talk.
Well, you're interrupting right now.
How we used to be able to do Zoom meetings pretty smoothly and now everything's goofed up. I can barely hear and no one would acknowledge my hand, raised hand or the message I put in the chat. So can I ask a question now?
Sure, sorry, Liz, I didn't know you were...
We, we don't have access to, we're not all on the Zoom and nothing's on our screen.
Well, somebody could watch Zoom certainly. Because there's other people on Zoom here. And I want to preface this by saying that before I got on Zoom, we got a text from the city clerk saying that there's been a breakout of COVID cases, especially on the first floor of City Hall. So I think we ought to be prepared to offer hybrid meetings, high-quality hybrid meetings, instead of me having to scout around and change my... instead of me having to scout around and change my password for Zoom. I don't know what got goofed up there, but anyhow, my question to Chris is, you mentioned the Irving School project and I don't know if you're aware, but there is some concern by the part of residents in that neighborhood who would like to see adaptive reuse of the building instead of having it torn down. I think that, you know, preservation and, um, energy savings should be part of the consideration for this. You know, we're, we have people talking about a climate crisis, we have no, um, sustainable policy as far as the city of Erie goes, but I think that should somehow be worked into this, so. And I just want others to know that, um, there has been a, a meeting of people from the, um, neighborhood around Irving who, and this developer has actually done adaptive reuse in Wesleyville, is my understanding, so that would be my two cents worth.
Yeah, I think there would be a whole lot that would go into the, the request that they would submit.
I don't know if she can hear you.
Can you hear me Liz?
Yeah, I, I can hear, but it's not, it's, there's a huge echo, but I can sorta hear.
So everyone turn off their mics unless they're speaking?
So I think, um, you know, you raise a good point, I think there, there would be a lot of variables that go into the applications that come in. But, you know, right now, it's, it, it, I guess that we need to decide if it's worth creating the tool. And then, you know, each project will, would be measured on, on a project-by-project basis and whether or not we could support it. You know, there's a lot, some, some of them we would not, you know, just because it might cash flow or make financial sense doesn't mean we would want to participate, so.
People actually make that evaluation, Chris, is it all on your shoulders and we have a group that?
Well, we have, you know, for these funds, we're gonna be creating a, a, a different, uh, uh, review board and review policy. So it's not gonna be the existing, uh, and I don't think we would want it to all flow through the existing review board. We need to have a different lens for these projects because they're, they're projects that, and, you know, we'll go into more detail, but these are the types of projects we haven't really been looking at before, so we need to create a new, um, you know, a new lens to, to take a look at these. So I don't know Liz, if that helped, um, oh, she was there.
Yeah, that, that helped.
I was on the, I was the Irving School and they're talking, and I, I was gonna say something earlier, but it'd be nice if there was a, somehow an incentive to, you know, new development in the city, but to reuse existing buildings versus building brand new and tearing down. But I know the numbers need to work, you know, every building is different, every building is different needs, but, um, I think that's a really great, uh, two things at once, develop in the city, develop an existing building, except demoing and, uh, kind of balance with keeping the building, but it depends on each developer and what they come from, what, what the numbers end up, but I would hope that saving a building might be more economical to have an existing building renovated rather than build brand new.
Yeah, and that could be part of, that could be part of, you know, uh, assistance that we offer, is that we offer it in a certain way. That if you choose to, choose to develop it one way, we're able to help you, if you go another way, maybe we don't.
About the school district, improve all of these buildings and put them in use.
Yeah, but I, I don't even, I don't even consider this really an incentive, I, I think it's becoming a necessity. It's not really one of these things you throw out there trying to bring people to the table. It's, it's becoming obvious that, that there's a gap with these projects. Everyone we've looked at, right, everyone we've talked to, they, they run into the same issue, so. I could go on about this one.
Can you explain why banks are not fulfilling their needs?
Well, it's not, it, it's, it's not something that the banks aren't doing, you know, the banks are heavily regulated, they can only lend so much based on appraised values. We've, we've always had somewhat of a appraisal challenge, uh, yeah. That exists with, with large-scale projects in, in a lot of areas and, and it exists in Erie. So if you're, if you're gonna do a large-scale investment for every dollar you're investing, it may appraise at sixty cents as completed. Because you don't, you don't get that value from day one, you don't get that market value. So, you know, a bank is gonna be able to lend maybe eighty percent of that sixty cents. And so how do you, you know, there's, there's always equity injection, but that's not enough to make up the difference, so. And, 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 you know, we're, we're seeing a lot of price pressure now, things are inflationary now, so that's made it even worse.
Thank you.
Can we move on to the second point, second bullet?
Yeah, I'm gonna take, um, Cafe. So Cafe is the 501(c)(3) that runs Celebrate Erie. And we, it's Cafe, it's Culture Arts and Festivals of Erie. And we raise about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year to run that event. None of it comes through taxpayer dollars. The last two years, we haven't been able to do it. Through the Erie County Data Center, uh, we analyzed, uh, the, the funding, the impact from attendance and from, um, people spending money downtown and around the area. And in 2019, uh, the economic impact of Celebrate Erie was over ten million dollars. So we went without that the last two years. What we would like to do with some of the ARP funding is a few things. First of all, we'd like to help, um, with the economic recovery in terms of our artists, our musicians, our entertainers and our performers, uh, to, to be able to pay more. We also want to start an eight-one-four, uh, concert series, um, that would occur in our, in some of our more neglected parks. In order to do that, we'll have to build up some infrastructure, not all of our parks and our qualified census tracts have electricity to allow us to have concerts in those parks. So we wanna bring some capacity to those with some important infrastructure. And we wanna have more bands come and activate those parks throughout the summer, probably in July and August, probably between, uh, the July third fireworks and Celebrate Erie. We're looking at Sunday afternoons to do that, um, you know, late afternoon, maybe one or two bands a week. And then, um, we also want to work to really, uh, expand our reach regionally. We saw through that, um, county's data analysis that we are attracting people to come in from outside and spend the night in a hotel, come down to the event for two or three days, they're spending an average of seven hours at the event, so they're, um, you know, they're coming back, they're coming different days to see different things. We think that if we marketed that regionally, we could get a lot more people to come into the city and, and spend their money. So we're looking at doing a lot of things like that and really kind of being, you know, one, one of the other things that we've tried to do is to build our multicultural district. And that's been difficult because a lot of minorities and people of color couldn't afford to pay their vendor fees. We had heard, you know, historically that it was difficult for local vendors to afford those fees, so we, we cut them way back. We'd like to cut them a little bit more or even provide scholarships to some folks who may not be able to afford to join. Or, um, you know, do special sessions where we have, you know, foods from around the world, like on Saturday afternoon or something. And so we're gonna need funding to be able to make that happen. So those are some of the types of things that we'd like to do through that funding.
So move on to the next category, the COVID nineteen economic recovery and growth fund, uh, for refinancing and restructuring. So one of the, one of the biggest needs as we come out of the shutdowns and I think it's gonna be the ability to help businesses restructure debt, restructure the short-term shutdown related debt that they incurred.
Your bank's not.
Sorry, trying to, uh, trying to survive the, uh, the shutdown. You've got a lot of small businesses that, um, fell behind on rent, fell behind with their vendors, started charging things to credit cards, uh, borrowing short-term expensive, uh, money to, to try to get through and survive. I think, uh, that there's going to be a, uh, a need for short-term refinancing and restructuring to help the small businesses repair their balance sheets, heal their balance sheets, repair their cash flows. And I, I think, uh, being able to come in and refinance, uh, COVID-related, shutdown-related debt at zero percent, stretch it out for a few years, is gonna be a huge help to a lot of the small businesses. These are not grants, these would be, uh, zero percent loans and it would have to be COVID-related debt. We're not refinancing anybody's property at zero percent, but we wanna help them, you know, maybe they're behind on their utilities. And, uh, again, maybe they've been paying vendors with credit cards and juggling a lot of short-term debt. And, um, so I think that would be a big, of, of big assistance to, uh, to a lot of our smallest businesses in the city.
Which they would have to prove and open up their books to you.
That's right.
Who just don't, they, uh, I didn't.
That's right, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna have to show.
I have, uh, five hundred thousand dollars, I'm just.
Well, these, these would be, these would be, uh, probably capped out somewhere thirty-five, forty thousand dollars, because this is meant to refinance short-term working capital and debt that they incurred during the shutdown. It's not meant to refinance a building or, uh, provide them with cheap capital for something else. So they would have to show that, you know, I, I, he, here's my credit card, I charged up a lot of things over the last eighteen months because I tried to survive, um, you know, I'm three months behind on the electric bill, whatever it might be. And, you know, if we can take all of that off of their back and, you know, put that out at zero percent, stretch it out over three or four years, that business, you know, is gonna have a better chance at recovering and, and surviving. So I think, you know, again, with the spirit of what these funds are supposed to do, I think that would be an effective way to help small business.
And following the mandate or whatever you wanna call it from the Fed, we would have to prove to them, you know, we're like the middleman now.
Right.
As that, hey, we did our homework, this business, uh, built up a debt unfortunately and we're here to help them.
Sure.
Here are some of their numbers that went through us, we're.
Yeah.
It's not just taking that we did our job, I mean, we still have to be specific with.
Yeah, and some of the other, some of the other, like the CARES funding that had come out before and some of the other programs, one of the things that we required was tax returns from the year prior to the shutdown. We wanted to see if they were a viable business before it hit. If they were struggling before COVID, then we're probably not gonna be able to help them. But if they, if they can, if they can document that they were, uh, a, a sustainable business and, you know, they hit the wall in 2020, and then they can show that they, they incurred this debt trying to survive and stay open, I think that meets the spirit of what these funds are for. And, uh, and again, I like when I, when we can also try to revolve it back in again and use it over, so. I think, I think it would be an effective way to help small business.
Chris, how about businesses that, um, they've closed because they don't have the employees or they don't have the staff? Either they're just not available or they're, they can't find people who wanna work for that, maybe they have to increase salaries, I don't know. Would, would that qualify?
I think our preference would be for the businesses that were forced to close. If a business closed because maybe they just weren't able to attract the workers they needed, I mean, I suppose you could say that's COVID-related, but preference is gonna be to those that were actually ordered to close, uh, because that's pretty clear. So there's always gonna be some gray area with this, but we're gonna have to document everything as, as well, you know, as we can, so. The next category, uh, small business diversity loan and grant program. So this would be for our small, uh, very small businesses in the city that are owned by, by minorities, uh, in the minority community. And so there's, there's always been a challenge to access that capital, that challenge has gotten worse as pandemic has gone on. And so we wanna make sure that we're able to assist, uh, with the businesses that are owned by folks in the minority community. So that would be set aside. And that, that would be a pretty open, um, definition for that. It would go beyond just COVID-related debt, we wanna see the, their businesses reopen, new businesses get established. And so if we have affordable capital for that, I think it would go a long way in trying to accomplish that.
And that matches funding from the Erie County Redevelopment Authority as well, right?
Sorry, yes, yeah, the county is already funded, um, I, I should know that, I don't remember how much, but. Yeah, we've actually been deploying, we've actually been deploying, uh, county funds in, in the city, that it's almost all exclusively in the city. But, uh, I think we did five loans this year so far, um, just in the, in the last, in second half of the year. And the program's still getting up to speed, so I, I think we'd see a lot of, uh, uh, assistance with, with this. I think it would be well-received. The next category was, oh, sorry.
Well, some of the rules are here, but, you know, if it's gonna mimic the, the county program for, you know, uh, for startup and, uh, business have to be, uh, you know, created after 2020. And, uh, and I understand support, but, you know, more than half the businesses that are created are going to fail in the first three years. And so I just wonder if the startup is the place to put the money, uh, as opposed to, you know, one that's, you know, got a couple of years of track record and can be waffling, you know, because doing, you know, uh, circumstances beyond their control.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, because if you, if you make it exclusively startup, then I don't think you're really filling your mission. And so if you look at our flagship fund, for example, you know, we, we, we wanna make sure that we have a mix in there. We wanna support existing businesses that have been here paying taxes and they ought to have the ability to get access to those micro grants too. And we don't want it to be exclusively a startup grant. So, you know, typically we'll have, you know, a couple of startups mixed in there, but we'll also have businesses that have been here and have been providing service, uh, and, and have been paying taxes in the city. So it's not all startup, so I, I, that's how I envision this category too, it's gonna be broad.
Read the, um, the guidelines for the county program and, and for the startup.
Well, I can tell you, we're doing, we're doing existing minority-owned businesses, actually more than, than startups. We have a separate startup grant.
Right, that's the one I was referring to, if this one was gonna mimic that startup grant, or is this?
It's gonna be like the diversity grant program at the county RDA.
Okay.
Quite, quite similar, so.
Chris, how do you get the word out, like if I'm a, let's say had a business, how do I find out about you?
So, you know, it's a multi, multi, uh, planned attack, I guess. I mean, it, it's, you know, probably a mayor's press conference and probably some interviews with, uh, local media and, and asking all of you to share with your networks and, uh, uh, that's probably the best way. I mean, we're gonna be, you know, getting the word out there as best as, as we can, um, sharing with our, 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 uh, service partners like Paramount Pursuits and Gannon's SBDC and, and, uh, in fact, I have a plan, I'm meeting with both of them if this funding's approved, to go over with them line by line what, what is eligible, so that they can work with the people they're working with to put them in contact with us, so. Yeah, that, that's really, getting the word out there is critical because otherwise folks aren't gonna really know what, what's available.
Yeah. We've also tasked the mayor's council of advisors with getting the word out to all their networks and with helping us to get applications in the door so we can get the funding out. And, um, Chris will be announcing very soon, uh, project review board, uh, that's very diverse board that will be, um, also helping to get the word out, to evaluate the applications and to help us deploy these funds, so.
Yeah, that's good.
We're, we'll be, we'll be getting the word out a lot very often. We'll be, we'll be getting the word out a lot very often. We'll be using social media as well. And then Social Pinpoint, which is the digital engagement tool that we'll be using to communicate all the different ARP initiatives and resources and also to get input from residents on some of the other things that we're going to be doing that, that we want to get feedback on.
Chris, you have a network of banks, too, that you deal with almost every day. So I'm sure if they get a phone call, they'll, they'll share with you the programs that are out there.
Oh, yeah.
Because obviously, not everybody's going to be able to walk into a bank, but people will contact banks.
I, I got a call today from, from someone I've worked with over the years at, at a local bank saying, you know, have these programs happened yet? And I said, well, you know, hopefully they will. But, you know, I'm already getting calls, and we haven't even put it out there yet. So I think between all of our networks and everybody we know and the council of advisors, and, and it's a good point about the board we're putting together, which is going to be made up of minority members of the community. You know, they're, they're going to be going out, letting, letting folks know as well. So, you know, we're, we're only going to be as good as we are getting the word out about this, so.
A placard that tells us what a minority is? I'm not playing devil's advocate here, but if you look at the national numbers, there are more female executives working right now in the United States than there are males. So in essence, a male is a minority.
Well, so.
Just playing.
Yeah.
Attorney, attorney.
Typically, the definition for minority programs usually is, is, is ethnic and, and women-owned businesses. So that's the usual definition for most of the programs that I've worked with.
What? Hi, I would like to get the citation from the council president about the CEOs. And would you be able to provide that information to all of council? And then I want it broken down by CEO and then by small business. And I'd also like it to be then melded with the information about how COVID has particularly hit women earners, wage earners, hard, because women are the ones who traditionally have to, have to provide childcare. And when you get a notice that your child has been exposed to COVID at school, you have to quarantine. So I'm looking forward to seeing your facts and figures on this. So can you get that to us by, before the next council meeting, please?
I'll send it to you yesterday. Go on, Chris.
So, sorry. So that's, yeah, so it's a small business diversity program. That's what we envision are the small micro loan category and funding.
So I have a question. So you're putting together a board, you say, to prioritize who qualifies. My question is a little bit different than the president's, but will you be using some kind of progressive stack? Because while women in general are less bankable, you know, you, if you look at the statistics, the black man is the least bankable. You know what I mean? Then followed by the Latina man, then the black woman and the Latina woman. So, you know, it's, what they're doing is, a progressive stack is a tool that builds equity into a system. And so like, it's kind of say, okay, if you're, have a twenty-point system and everything's worth so many points, it's like, hey, if you're a black man, you get five points. If you're a black woman, you get four, three, two, one, in order to build equity from the least bankable to the most bankable so that everybody's on an even tier.
So there's a lot of variables that are going to go into this, and that's why we need to build a strong review committee that's made up of all minority members. Because no one answer fits every project. So you've got to look at every project. What's the investment amount? What's the job creation? What's the track record of the applicant? Do they have the capacity to pay us back? Do they, are, are they, are they ready to take on debt? Do they have a business plan? So there's, there's so much more than just race and gender. So, you know, we just want to, we just want to set aside funds that are strictly available for the minority community and then evaluate within that as to who's ready and who's not.
Okay, so.
Because, because if we don't, if we don't, if we don't set funds aside, then it's going to get lost in the big pot of funds. But within that set aside, now, you know, do, do we get a hundred applications? Maybe we can only fund eighty of them on the merits of their business plan. And, and, you know, we'll know as, as we go along. One thing about the, the council of advisors and this review committee is that they're going to keep us on track. If we start to, if we start to, you know, veer off course, and that's why I've said from the start, we need a strong review committee. And I don't want to use the existing review committees that are out there. They do a great job, but they're not geared for this. So we need to establish a review committee that is looking at everything through the DEI lens so that they can make sure that I'm tracking correctly.
You know, that's one of, that's one of the ways panels look at things now in order to build equity into the system. And so I was just asking, I know there's a bunch of factors that go into it, including, you know, worthwhile, you know what I mean? The person, the business, the plan.
And I'm relying, and I'm relying, I'm relying on them because I've always measured, measured things a certain way. You know, it's got to have a certain cash flow. It's got to have a certain level of equity in the project. It's got to have whatever it might be. And I have to think differently about this. So I'm going to be leaning heavily on that group to make sure that I'm looking at this the right way and I'm not being, you know, too conservative or whatever it might be. So I, I don't, hopefully that answered your question.
Do you know how, what percentage would be set aside for the minority community out of the total pot?
Are we within, are we talking about this line or out of the total? Is that, is that the DEI focus column?
I'm looking at, you know, total dollar, dollar figure.
So a little more than half. That's a projection. I mean, we don't really know until we start getting applications, but what we're estimating it to be, it looks like a little over fifty percent.
Sounds good.
Next category.
Chris, I just want to make one comment. Like, what everybody has to understand, including the public out there, is this is almost a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We don't want to screw it up from what you present us. You guys, the last thing you want to do is, this is, this is an awesome opportunity that this may never come around again. So the more people we can help is huge, so just.
Absolutely. And, and, and that's why, and I, if I could follow up on that, we've tried to design this in a way that is going to help the most people possible, but also design it in a way that's going to see a lot of these dollars flow back and give us the ability to, to revolve them over and over again. If we can point back years down the road and say, you know, we took this program and, and we did what we were supposed to do with it, but we also recouped a lot of it and grew new programs. So we're trying to strike that balance of not just writing a bunch of grants, handing it out and being done.
Which could also increase tax revenues and.
You know, we want to, we want, a lot, a lot of this, yeah, a lot of this will be grant, but a lot of this will be very flexible lending, too, so that we can reuse this and create. I, I want most of these tools to, to exist after this is over. And that would be terrific if we've come out of here with two or three new tools that now are, are sustainable and enduring. Because this is, I mean, how often do you have the chance to create three or four tools? We don't have money to, I mean, start them, so.
That's what you do with U-DAG money. It's a good example. That's what you do with the U-DAG money.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's a good example. The city's Business Development Revolving Loan Fund, that's internal. That's not state money. Started with about three hundred thousand in U-DAG, and it's about seven million now. So it takes time, but that's what I'd like to do with these categories, too, is look back someday and say, we grew this and we kept it and we helped a lot of people.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I just, I just thought it needed me mentioning. Next category, KIVA Diversity Matching Loan. Is Jen still on?
She's on.
Jen, do you mind jumping in? And you can explain that better than I can.
Not at all, not at all. Thank you. I hope that you can hear me. A lot of times you guys are sounding like Charlie Brown's teacher. So, okay. I, I've talked a lot about KIVA in the past. KIVA is a, an online crowdfunding microloan platform. It is a 501(c)(3). And we are the local Erie hub here. We started this about a year ago. In fact, we're coming up on our contract renewal right now. And since the first loan started in March, we have been able to assist eleven entrepreneurs with over eighty-two thousand dollars in startup funding. So KIVA is designed, actually, to assist entrepreneurs and is targeted towards minority and women-owned businesses to get that first round capital. You know, if you've got a great idea and you, but you need some cash to implement your idea, whether it's an online program or a retail store or any, anything that you want to do, if you go to a bank, it's incredibly difficult, we know. And we've talked about it already tonight, for people of color, for women, to get that first round funding. So this way, KIVA gives them an opportunity to crowdfund a loan of up to fifteen thousand dollars, depending on what they've been approved for. It does not rely on your credit score. It does not rely on, on any of the traditional financing rules. What it really does, it's, it's social impact lending. So it is, it is lenders from around the globe that are looking to give people that first leg up, to give them that first opportunity. Now, part of KIVA, a separate part of KIVA is that we have the opportunity to institute a matching loan fund, a managed loan fund. KIVA will manage this money for us, but we have the say in where the money goes. So we need at least fifty thousand dollars to open a matching loan fund with KIVA. Currently, we have twenty-five thousand dollars in the kitty ready to go from two of the local banks here. Northwest and PNC have contributed. I have asked for a one hundred thousand dollars from the ARP funding so that we could have a robust matching loan fund. Now, when a loan gets matched, it doesn't make the loan amount any higher. It helps them, it helps the borrower get to their goals faster. They are responsible for crowdfunding, for crowdfunding, you know, ten, fifteen thousand dollars. So this way, we can turn on this matching loan fund and they can get there in half the time to do that. And again, we get to tell KIVA who gets the matching funds. So we're, we're talking about only, you know, minority-owned businesses. And I, I had included women. We can certainly discuss, you know, what the, those parameters are. And I think that the people who are in the project management that Chris had talked about earlier can actually have a say in this as well. Maybe they design what it is. But we get, I, I just want to stress that we tell KIVA, not everybody gets the matching fund from Erie that has a loan. We can say that only minority, I know, minority men get this loan. Only minority women get this loan. We have to, we tell them the parameter. We can't keep changing it up, but we have to decide the parameter in the beginning. And those people will have a one-to-one match of all the dollars that they crowdfund and raise during their campaign.
Jen? This is Liz. I can hear you perfectly as opposed to the other conversation. You, you're coming in great. Do you think it would be possible to, like, send us a text alert or an email when there's a current KIVA? Even if it, it doesn't have to be Erie, but just so people can see how it works. I think, you know, we all became familiar with GoFundMe when it first started, and now that has such a broad range of, you know, hey, I need help paying for a funeral or what, how sad those kinds of things are. But if you could let us know, I think it would be interesting for us to follow a KIVA ask maybe from the start so we, and, you know, we can see that it is international and, because it's one of those things where i- if you don't know the lingo, it might seem a little hard to grasp, but.
Sure, sure. Yeah, absolutely. We, we do mention KIVA borrowers at every press conference. And if you look at the city's social media, we always announce when somebody has reached the public stage. There's a couple, there's, there's a few hurdles they have to get through before they get to the public fundraiser, or one hurdle, I should say, the private fundraising stage, before they can get to the public, when we start doing a lot of the marketing with them. But I'd be more than happy to make sure that, that all of council is aware every time we have a KIVA loan that starts, so that you can log on. At any time, you can check out kivushub.org. That's K-I-V-A-U-S-H-U-B as in void, dot org. And on there, there's a button that you can push in the right-hand corner that says, see US lenders or see US borrowers. And you can take a look at anybody from the United States that's raising money currently and kind of.
Can you narrow it down? Can you do a search? Can you, like, put a filter on so you can look at, like, the Erie region ones? Okay, that sounds good.
You can. I'll tell you right now, currently, the last KIVA borrower I had has closed, and they got their cash and everything's good. I have three in the hopper that are getting ready to go in, like, different stages. One is at KIVA, getting ready to be approved, and two more are in different stages of their application that I'm walking them through and helping them with. So we should have something up very soon, again, from Erie for you to see. But like I said before, we, we've helped eleven go through the process successfully so far this year. Thank you very much.
Yep, two questions, Jen. One, so would we be able to use these funds for what you were calling the, the private, the private part of the funds that they have to raise? And number two, I understand how this can assist people, but I was wondering, just as devil's advocate, if you have a product, if you have a goal and if you have a system that seems to be attractive, it would seem that, I don't know if we would be, by putting in the match ourselves, you know, if we would be not allowing, you know, that person to actually, you know, see if, you know, it gets the traction in the actual crowdfunding source? Because people tend to get behind things that they think are going to be successful and not behind things that they don't believe are going to be successful.
Right, and now I, I get that. Is that Michael, right?
It is.
Let's see. When, when the KIVA borrower is in their private fundraising stage, and that is immediately after they have accepted their loan contract and they know how much they need to raise money-wise, during the private fundraising stage, the borrower has up to fourteen days, fifteen days, sorry, fifteen days to raise, or to, to achieve, to get a certain amount of lenders to give them cash, okay? Or to lend them money to invest in their business. That means that the minimum amount that you can loan for KIVA is twenty-five dollars. So they need to rally. This is kind of them showing KIVA during the private fundraising stage. They're sharing that, that link. They're contacting their network, their vendors, their, you know, their clients if they're already in business, their friends, their family, their social network, and saying, hey, I would like it very much if you could help me by investing in my business and you can give me as, you know, you can invest as little as twenty-five dollars. Remember, these are all loans that get paid back, too. So that is about a number of people during the private fundraising stage. So, that is about a number of people during the private fundraising stage. The match still does apply during the private fundraising stage if we want it to. I will clarify with Kiva about when we can have that match, I mean, maybe we, it's possible that we can have the match kick in only when they go public, so that we know that they've made it through, you know, through that private fundraising stage. But yeah, I'm going to be, I'll be honest, I'm going to have to really check with my supervisors, my people at Kiva to make sure when we can turn that on and off. Does that answer your question?
It does. I just hate to deprive the good people of the world from being able to kick in and assist people if they like to.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's a pretty exciting concept when, you know, you have, you know, every one of the entrepreneurs that I've worked with has called me and been incredibly excited for the first time when they log on and they, and they tell me, oh my gosh, there's people in Australia, there's people in Switzerland, there's people, you know, all over the world that are, that's loaning me money. Kiva has millions of lenders and many lending teams. And the reason that they do this is because they understand that it's difficult for people, especially people of color, to get the kind of, that first rung capital, you know, that first push so that they can show what they can do, you know. They get that first chance to do that. So, they, they get their money back, it's not shark tank, they're not looking for equity and they're not looking, they know they're not going to make money on any of these businesses at this stage, you know. It's just, it's really about making sure that everybody gets a fair shot, or, you know, has the opportunity for a fair shot.
I just want to add to that, Jen, that I think this program has an outsized effect for the amount of funding we're talking about. How many have we closed together out of that 11, like, three or four of them maybe this year? That by, by having funding through Kiva, it's enabled them to, to then secure funding from the other economic development programs, they wouldn't have been able to do that without the first rung of capital. So, in, in maybe, you know, a third of her deals, it's immediately led to leveraging. I don't know if I have my numbers right, but I think probably three or four out of your deals, so I think it has an outsized effect. So, everything we've looked at pretty much up to this point has really been geared towards small business, but the next category, we're switching gears, looking at some of the industrial blight removal that we're working on at the county RDA, and then what does that look like after the blight is gone and in our efforts to redevelop that and create large projects that create large numbers of jobs? So, we wanted to set aside resources to help us redevelop once EMI and Quinte are gone and down. We don't want to just leave a vacant parking lot there, we want to now add to our capacity. And I'm sure you've heard me say this, you've heard the chamber talk about this, that for us to be able to market Erie, we have to have something to market, we have to have something to sell, we've got to have square footage that's turnkey and ready to go. Businesses aren't interested in waiting through a four- or five-year demo and remediation and environmental cleanup process, they want things that, it's got to be turnkey. And so, I envision these funds going towards the next chapter, once we get past demo, redeveloping large tracts of industrial and commercial space that will be eventually turnkey-ready, so that we can market Erie and bring the larger projects to our city. So. It does, yeah, it does. Yeah, that's the type of project though that we, you know, we're trying, we're tackling the two that we're working on now. You know, we're hopeful that demo will, will be through the winter, working on some utility issues and some other things, but it's moving along and, you know, it's a slow process, but it's, it's a process, we need to do it. And so, you know, again, the dual benefit of removing industrial blight and then creating new capacity to be able to attract some of the larger-scale projects to Erie. And so, the next category really, oh, I'm sorry.
Just a quick one, so of the $5 million is, how much of that is still for clearing? And how much, or would the funds already been allocated be enough to already remediate those sites and this would be going toward building something?
That's a good question. I think everything that's already been allocated should cover the demo. We think we're pretty much there, we're just working through the process now of, we're still moving, we're still removing asbestos from Quinte and we're still doing some other cleanup, so we can't, can't pull the trigger on demo yet, but I think the funds that we have secured already will cover demo. So, this is with, this is with an eye to the future. Now, are we going to rebuild and, and create some, some capacity? And I've said for quite a while, I would love to see a million square feet of industrial capacity that's turnkey-ready, because now you can start going after some bigger fish. And right now, when we have inquiries, there's not a lot of real estate available, there's hardly any of any sizable amount, so I'd like to have something to, to offer.
Chris, does that involve the Coke plant at all?
Potentially, I think, I think that's a site that's, that's, you know, right now, not one that we're focusing on, we've got a couple of them we're working on, but Erie Coke is going to eventually need, you know, we're going to figure out what to do with that. Was that a question from someone?
No.
Oh, okay.
We're going to make sure that the land is clean.
Right.
The present owners are going to pay something to get it clean.
Yeah, I would rather focus on, you know, a couple of sites and actually get it finished and then spread ourselves too thin, because it's, it's a, it's a long proposition with these properties, but, you know, we need to do it right.
So, we're talking about the Wolf and Cherry as primary one?
And Quinte, both, yeah. And, and then look beyond those two, you know, there's some other sites we're evaluating right now and, and actually talking with folks on, but this 5 million I see is, is the redevelopment after the cleanup.
Thank you.
And so, it leads to the next category of urban core and anchor building redevelopment, which I view this category as having some dry powder to, potentially to, to match, you know, a future RACB grant or, or provide match for some other source of funding for, for our major buildings downtown, our anchor buildings. And there's not a specific project in mind, but over the years, we've had projects come up, like the Renaissance Building, and, you know, if there's ever future reuse of other anchor buildings downtown, you always need to have, to identify matching funds for a large project, and it would be good to be able to have funds that are dedicated to the very core of the city and our anchor buildings. There's a lot of investment that needs to be made and I think that would eventually find a good project. The flagship and Commodore Fund, so we're pivoting back to small business now. The flagship and Commodore Fund, I think we're all familiar with. I really believe, especially the flagship fund, has been a tremendous success, I think it's been very well received by our small business community. We're able to assist with a lot of flexibility and we're also sustainable, these are dollars we generate. And I'm really proud of the fact that we're able to generate enough in, in earnings from our programs to directly turn around and inject that back into the small business community. The program has grown over the three years or so, three and a half years, and, you know, typically now with, with each round, we're assisting 15 to 20 businesses with various projects, sometimes facade improvements, equipment purchases, you know, whatever it might be. But these are the businesses that, you know, they line our main streets, they, they fill the vacancies, they provide people with options downtown that they wouldn't otherwise have. So, it really adds to the fabric of our downtown community and, again, it's sustainable, we generate that and we're able to give it right back to the business community. And we have had, I think, quite a good representation with minority-owned businesses, especially the last couple rounds of flagship funds, and we continue to strongly encourage folks to, to apply. So, I think it's been very successful and I'd love to be able to, to continue to incentivize that investment down here.
I would just add that, you know, we just had our round that was open in October for applications, it just closed October 29th, and historically, we've gotten, you know, anywhere from 30 to 40 applications. This round, we got like 65, I think, eligible.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four total, I think 65 of them were eligible. So, Chris and Jen are evaluating them now, I mean, typically, they only fund 12 to 15, but if we can get this funding passed, we'd like to really be able to move some of these funds out the door and, and get them in, into people's hands so that we can really make a difference, because this is the most we've ever had in a single round.
And I think that spike is related to COVID too. It's related to the shutdown, so a lot of small businesses are really looking for assistance. So, some of it's going to come out of flagship, some of it's going to come out of, of the refi, restructure and some other categories. So, you know, we want to keep them here, we want to, we want to help them make it through this, we don't want a lot of vacant storefronts lining our streets, so that's, that's our goal with this.
Yeah. Could you explain what, exactly what the Commodore Fund is and how, exactly how it works and whether it's a grant or a loan?
Sure, so the Commodore, the flagship is the micro grant that's up to 2,500. The Commodore, we don't do a whole lot of those, there has to be measurable job creation. And so, that's a grant that goes up to 25,000 if they, if they create between five and 10 jobs. So, this is a new business that moves into town, I believe we have funded maybe three of those. I don't typically utilize that pot of funds, because if they're creating that kind of job number, then I've been able to find resources maybe at the state level or other areas, so I don't use the, I don't use up our funds for that. Yeah, so the bulk of it's with the flagship, the small business, but I, you know, the Commodore is still there, it's still open, and for the right project, we would want to support it. But there has to be, this is for a business that's new to the city and they're bringing new jobs into the city. And so, we have done a handful over the past few years.
So, question number two, considering, you know, how COVID has impacted small businesses, do you foresee using some of these funds for, to offset the match that the people have to put up themselves in order to receive the flagship?
I think we probably would still be looking for someone to, to come up with that match. If, if their request is more, you know, COVID relief-related, I think we would take it from another line. I don't think we want to change how that program has worked, I think, I think it's a good thing to have a business put a little skin in the game themselves, and that's what we've been able to, to strike that balance so far. So, if, you know, maybe that doesn't fit for what they need, so that we pull it from another line item here and try to assist them that way.
Where you could sync two programs so that you can offset the match.
But I want to follow up one more point, your question about Commodore, you know, we've, I don't know how many, we've done three or four of them, but those have been fully funded by the interest earned off of our loans too. None of this has ever touched the city's general fund or operating budget, it's all been self-generated over the years, and so that's what makes the program, in my view, it makes it even better. Yep, yep. Technical assistance for small businesses, this is where, you know, a lot of businesses go to apply for a loan or a grant and maybe they're, they're, they have difficulty getting the financials that are prepared that I need to see. There are challenges out there with the technical part of applying for, for programs, and that's a major hurdle for small business, and if we can help them get past that hurdle with some technical assistance, that's what we would like to do, is, is help them get to a point where they can provide the reports and the financials that they need to provide.
Can I, so is that going to be achieved through hiring more people, or do you plan on outsourcing this line item?
I think a lot, right now, the bulk of it's outsourcing is the idea here, because none of us really have the, frankly, have the time to, to meet with a business on an ongoing basis, so you've got providers like Paramount and GAN and SBDC that this is what they do, and I think they're the ones that we would want to support, they do this every day.
We would put out an RFP to invite proposals for how to help businesses, how best to support them to build the services around them that they need.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Next category, we wanted to carve out funds that would be available for community development projects that, that primarily are in the neighborhood's hardest-hit and most affected by, by the economic downturn. So, these would be projects at your community centers, at your neighborhood centers that, you know, have more of a community development aspect to them than just the traditional economic development projects. So, we wanted to make sure we had some funds set aside to be able to take those requests as well. And so, that's, to me, that's a pretty broad category, now, it's still going to have to fit the definition of how these funds have to be used, and that's important, but it, it gives us a category to take requests that, again, are community development-related and, you know, I think of neighborhood centers, I think of, you know, resources like that for this category. Well, I think parks, we have a second.
There you go, Jen.
Parks, yeah, parks will be a separate. Yeah, no, it's okay, we're, we'll be coming back to you for information on how we hope to work on our parks, but this we will develop an application process for, and like Chris said, community centers, centers, other community resources will be able to apply for funding.
So, I think parks is in public works, I think.
Yeah, planning, yeah, planning and public works.
So, that was the question, will governments be able to apply? Yes or no?
Government for the community.
Like the city of Erie, like if they wanted to.
Well, for that category, what I envision are the neighborhood centers and the, the folks that are providing services to, you know, to the youth of our city, whether it's, I mean, that's what it is, it's neighborhood centers, it's Eagles Nest.
Again, we've got CDDG coming for that. I'd rather see, and I'm just throwing up right now, you have these parks that are, okay, an outdoor community center. Can that be?
Well, there's, there's a.
Into that type of.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at all the requests, the one thing I want to stress those is, there's a lot that's not eligible under block grant, that, that the centers would like to do, and, and so.
We have public service cap.
That's a fairly narrow band, and there's a lot that falls outside of that too. So, I think there's some things that you see people wanting to do that maybe wouldn't fit that definition, I mean, that's a Dab Smith question, but I, I know from my time up there, there's a lot that does not fit into that application too, so.
But there, but we'll be coming back to you on December 7th when we have the study session with planning. I can preview it, but there will be, we're planning on setting aside 5 million for parks and for development, and we'll be using that social pinpoint tool to get input from residents on what they'd like to see in their parks, specifically in the qualified census tracks.
Although, 5 million sounds like a lot of money.
27 parks.
Well, yes, but we have pots of money that we plan to use that 5 million to leverage, and we're going to turn that into at least 10 million more if we can.
Okay, when you, when you leverage that, the.
Okay, when you when you leverage that, there there is no guarantee that you will get any matching funds.
It's it's much more highly likely that we will get matching funds because we have that match and also because of the work that we're doing with the groundwork trust and with Cities of Service. So we have several group, national level groups that we're working with that because we have those programs in the city now and have the matching funds, we'll be more likely to assist with that. We also, of course, have been meeting with Bruce Katz, who is helping us develop kind of a playbook for how we can go after additional. Additional federal and state funding.
I just, you know, I I don't know. Like Jim said, that's 5 million is a lot of money. But when you're looking at all the parks we have, I would really like to see us put 10 million out there.
Yeah. Well, and it'd be the ones in the qualified census tracts too. We have to stay within that area.
How many do we have in that in the census tract? You know?
About 20, 20 to 25.
And then we have to look at what they need or what the community say they need.
Right.
Five million is not going to go very far. Okay, thank you.
So we'll, I guess we'll get to that on a different day. But those decisions are going to have to be made, whether you sprinkle sprinkle all over the city or whether you do a major impact project. And so I guess that's what really some of the people at this table are trying to impress upon.
There again, some parks may may just need 5 or $5,000 or spruce up, understand that. We will get into that December 7th.
Yeah, this this was really just, we just thought it was important to put a placeholder here so that we can take requests that may not fit into other boxes, you know, because they'll they'll be out there. Those they'll be projects out there that we can't really envision, we can't see right now.
So is the same panel going to decide who and how much the organizations get that are are giving services to the minority community?
Yeah. Yeah, it's going to be the diverse panel that reviews the grants, the loans, the projects.
Who's on that panel?
Do we have that finalized yet?
I think we do have it finalized, so.
I don't have the final list.
I can email it to you.
Do they have it on the committee?
Yeah, I think everybody, I think everybody confirmed as of today. We'll be announcing it Thursday too.
So who's who selected them? For, you know, someone who wants an application to get on a board, you think to get on a board that would award money, you know, that there would be some kind of transparent lens?
They were pulled from our advisory councils, people who have background in finance, real estate, economic development, community development, accounting, people who have the ability to assess whether or not a project makes sense to fund.
Right.
Do you want to add?
No, I mean, that's it, because I suggested, you know, if we can find someone with a finance background, find somebody with a legal background, find someone from the community centers perhaps. You know, we want to not just diverse in terms of ethnicity, but diverse in their backgrounds. So when I bring them a list of projects each month, they can help me analyze these. I mean, you know, I I I'm going to be relying on these folks to to give me guidance. So I, you know, we're trying to get a a pretty wide background of expertise here.
I have a question for, probably more for Renee than for Chris. You know, we got that invitation to be able to meet via Zoom with Bruce Katz, who is working with the city on how to maximize the impact of ARP funding. And I know that Kathy Schoff and David Brennan and I all said we would be available on November 23rd. I don't think I have any communication back yet from Mary Treadway. But have my other council colleagues answered that email where we requested to be part of that conversation? Because there was a, there was a question earlier about how do we know we're going to be able to, you know, leverage the funds that we're getting from ARP? So I'm asking Jim, Ed, Michael, Mel, did you respond to that email?
I don't know if I've seen it.
Everybody saw it. It went to everybody. Bruce Katz, remember there?
Liz, I I have got RSVP.
There was a story in the paper. David Brennan said, can city council be involved in learning from Bruce Katz about, you know, what his guidance is on this? I'm sure that we could resend the e, ask Mary Treadway to resend the email, but all of council should have gotten that email.
I I may have, I may have received it, but I get 70, 80 emails from all the committees I'm on, so I don't remember, but I I may have gotten it.
Well, I mean, we we need to take advantage of this opportunity because we can't say later, why didn't you ask us to participate if we don't respond to the invitation? And, you know, everybody, we're going to be all really busy between all the nighttime meetings, but there were like probably six different options for when he could speak to us, so.
And he'll and he'll be wanting to get input from you as well on what you see as community priority.
No, we, no, he has very specific times when he could meet with us. We aren't going to bring him into a study session. This isn't to grill him, it's to listen to what the kinds of of advice he's given to the city administrators and to the county. This isn't, this isn't a person that we're going to go in and, you know, throw up against the wall and say, well, what about this and what about this? We're going to listen to his expertise. So I don't think we'd bring, this person said, his administrative person at Drexel University said, here are six different options for when he would be available. So Kathy and David and I have already responded for November 23rd. And that's with Kathy Schoff trying to juggle teacher conferences too, so.
Liz, 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 this is Jim.
Kathy and I can listen.
This is Jim, Liz. I will have Lori resend it out. I know I did get it a week or a week and a half ago, and I know there are some dates on there. I did not respond yet, but we'll have Lori resend it to us. And I know there was many different options of dates and times. We'll just follow up with another email, that's all.
I I don't, I object to anyone's time being more important than this council's time. The person has been hired as a consultant, is being paid a fair amount of money, and if one of the things that need to happen is him to meet with this council, he should meet with this council. I don't see, I don't see a problem with it. He can zoom, he can zoom in from Philadelphia.
Then then you can have a study session with us, okay? This is nonsense, absolute nonsense, because I documented every email I sent to council about ARP funding going back to August. So to say that you don't get this information is just ridiculous. I talked about how do we improve communication at the last city council meeting? And what did you do to me? You insulted me because I went to hear a talk about systemic racism. I am not going to put up with this. Either approve the communication, answer emails, or stop criticizing. What? He just whispered something.
I told Ms. Schoff I have my 7 o'clock date I'm late for, that I'm moving on, okay? That's all.
Okay, bye.
I'll I'll be attending, and I think Liz and I don't know if she'll be going, so if there's any questions of council, you can always email us if there's any questions because we would answer them. And we'll have a we'll have a discussion with with Bruce. And I appreciate the opportunity to to meet with him.
As I said before, okay, we can, we can do it however, however you like, but I do think that it's important that we as a council, you know, so never mind. So we're going to have a guy from who doesn't live here, right? Going to come in here and tell us what he thinks he was. The top, if you read, if you did read the article, did you read the article? So, you know, so at the top of the list are the things of the people who hired him want, which is fine, you know? And so, but that's like no way to start a conversation about what a city needs, so.
The purpose of him meeting with you is to get your input on what you see as important because he has a handle on the funds that are available at the federal level, and he's going to help us go after those funds. So if he doesn't hear from you during one of these six sessions that he provided, then he's not going to know what your priorities are.
Fair enough.
And Bruce has been in Erie many times at the Jeffersons speaking. I've seen him speak a couple of times. And he's been, he's talking to other, other.
I'm like when people go around and try to spin what I said. I said, that's not what I said. I said, it's not from here. And he is not from here. Let the record state that.
Do you want to go over the last, last couple of categories then?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we're almost done. I think the, the only one remaining is the restaurant and entertainment industry category. And this is where we envision, this is primarily going to be in grant support to, you know, the hospitality industry in the city, the small restaurants. That's what our preference is going to be for is, you know, the ones that were hardest hit, just to try and get them through, you know, another few months so that they can reopen and and survive and stay here. So actually, that's our last category. And then just admin, since we're eligible to to cover myself and and Jen Hoffman salaries here, we figure we might as well take advantage of that too and and take a little bit of load off of our general fund since, you know, that would be an eligible use, so. So I guess at this point, you know, I don't know if you have any questions about the overall plan. I think we were wanting to to put this on agenda for the 17th, so I don't know if there's questions or concerns, if you're generally comfortable with this approach, you know, I can get it on agenda. I guess I need, I need to know where you're all at.
Chris, this is much needed. It is a lot of money. Is there any one place that you would be able to tweak at all? Like the Brownfield site development seems to be the most expensive need at 5 million.
We've also vetted this with the mayor's business council, gotten their input several times, tweaked it, brought it back to them, tweaked it again, brought it back to them. And, you know, all these numbers are based on what Chris is seeing in his experience and what we're hearing from the council as well.
And you want to make sure you have enough in the category that is going to enable you to complete the the mission too. And so, you know, Brownfield's a good example. It's a big number. But to give you an idea, when we look at the budget to to fully redevelop EMI, that's that's just a, you know, a small percentage of that. I mean, it's an expensive proposition to remediate, to tear down industrial blight. So, you know, if you put a smaller dollar amount in, are you actually having an impact? And, you know, maybe you shouldn't do it at all at that point. So you need to have enough in there to get the project done. And and so, you know, we've, we've tried to strike a balance here in terms of housing, in terms of small business, larger businesses, grants, loans, diversity, where it's all about trying to strike a balance and help as many as we can help. Hopefully that answered that. Okay.
You answered the questions and concerns that I have. And even though I may not agree with everything or the process, but again, I was not there. I wasn't there with the process. So I've learned through all my years that you have to put some trust in the folks that deal with it every day. And do I know as much about what you do as you? No, I don't. No idea. Just like there's other folks that don't know as much as I know about 34, 5 and 220 current and all the stuff I learned at Pennalec, okay? But I couldn't tell you that 10th Estate was going to blow up. I don't know nothing about that. But I can support it because it's going to help a lot of people directly and indirectly. Some we'll know about, some will say thank you, some we'll never know about. But if we feel in our hearts and our minds that we're doing the right thing for the masses of the city of Erie, then we need to move on.
So thank you, and I appreciate that. And I want to stress too that you're going to see these projects as they come through again. For example, what you approved back in September, which which is enabling us to move forward with the blight projects, none of that money's been transferred yet, none of it's been spent yet. You'll know when it's, when it is. And you're going to see it pass back through council again. So all we're doing now is just agreeing on how we want to allocate. We haven't spent anything yet. And it's going to be completely transparent, and you're going to know what projects are moving forward when I take them back through here on a project by project basis, just like the the loans and the deals I work on now, you see every single one of them. So that's how it's going to be with this. We're just creating buckets, but nothing has been spent yet. And you'll know when it does get spent. So thank you.
Of course, I was just.
I have, I have a question. We, you know, when, is this going to be on our agenda or are the officers of city council going to remove it from the agenda? This is a, you know, Mel gave a really good response about being supportive even if you don't agree with all the categories. But the hangup is going to be if a majority of council wants to approve this, but a minority of council decides to take it off the agenda, we're going to be up Schitt's Creek. And I'm, that's a reference to the TV show, not the, not the experiment. But so can somebody ask me, answer me that question? How are we going to assure that this gets on the agenda and doesn't mysteriously be removed? Because I, I could be wrong, but I think that the council president has left the study session.
Correct.
He has.
Okay, so how are we going to assure that this gets on the agenda if it looks like we have four votes for it, but a minority might decide to take it off?
First of all, the, being president of this council has certain rights, and none of us are able to take those rights away from the president.
Really? Okay. Yeah, you've laid down the gauntlet, Michael. Yay! Good for you. So are you saying that this is not going to go on the agenda? Because if it's not, we just wasted an hour and a half of our time. Are you speaking for the council president now that this will not move forward?
I'm, I'm not speaking for anybody. I, I'm just saying, in his absence, he's the sole person who has that authority.
I don't think you're correct on that. I think you're talking about common practice versus actual, what what's actually permitted. And if we are going to have the council president act like he is Mitch McConnell, I'm going to make sure that every person in Erie who voted for me knows that this is how business is being conducted now, okay? Anybody disagree? Anybody disagree with me spreading the word on this?
Well, I'd say I, I, I support this. I know there's been a lot of thought and process into this. You know, every question that we've asked, Chris has been, you know, well answered. And there isn't just a, uh, you know, they came up with this for some reason, there's a lot of thought behind it. So I just wanted to, uh, you know, say I support it.
Thank you. Yeah, it's just, really, it's a timing issue. If we are gonna get it on, uh, agenda, I mean, we, we actually need to get this all prepared tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
Tomorrow's Wednesday, so, um.
And, yeah, I mean, I, I did talk to Mr. Rosensky before the meeting, and he assured me he was fine with this going on the agenda for the seventeenth. So I think we're just, we're gonna go ahead and move forward with planning to get that down to the clerk's office by Thursday morning.
I support our study session today. Thank you, Renee and Chris, for taking the time out to explain things because, um, I always need that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.